Ryan Juarez.
All right, we are back from our closed session. We will begin now at 6:38. And we will go ahead and start with our Indigenous land acknowledgement. So we acknowledge the land currently occupied by Washington Unified School District as the traditional home of the Potwun people. The sovereign people have been caretakers of the area since time in Monreal. Despite centuries of genocide and occupation, the Potwun people continue as vibrant and resilient federally recognized and unrecognized tribes, bands, and rancherias. Today, we honor and recognize our Potwun tribal neighbors for their contributions as the caretakers of the Sacramento Valley and honor their sustained existence. With their blessing and continued guidance, Washington Unified School District seeks to provide an accessible, equitable, and supportive institution of learning and experience. All right, and now we are going to have our pledge of allegiance, and we would like to start off. Ryan Juarez, if you would please lead us in a pledge, we would appreciate it. He's all man, bro.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the routine and just as well.
Thank you very much. Your brother told us to do it.
Alrighty, and now that we've had our pledge of allegiance, we're gonna go ahead and have roll call. Vice President Pazati.
Here.
Clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Present.
Trustee Wong.
Here.
Trustee Vanegas.
Presente.
And I too am present. Announcement of the items that were of action taken in closed session. Regarding Government Code 54956.9 D2, pending and potential litigation, direction given. Government Code 54957, consideration of comprehensive school safety plan, CSSPs, information received. And Government Code Section 54957.6, conference with labor negotiators, WSDA, CSBA, and management, information received. And now for our communication, oh wait, approval.
I went off.
Agenda. Approval of the agenda, sorry, thank you. Do I have approval of the agenda or if there are no amendments?
I move.
I second.
Moved by trustee Wong, second by trustee Vanegas. All in favor?
Aye.
And I too say aye. And now communications and celebrations, and we have recognition of the 2023-2024 student board members for their service, Ms. June Flores.
It works.
This is routine for me now.
It's all right. It would be for me too.
Good evening, President Coffey, Superintendent Hildreth, trustees, cabinet members, and wonderful WSD family. I want to take a moment to congratulate our outgoing student board representatives for their dedication and hard work this past year. Your commitment to representing your schools and our district is truly commendable. And today, we want to memorialize your dedication and hard work to our district by presenting you with a certificate. I'm gonna go ahead and call you forward one at a time. And you can come up and get your certificate. I'm gonna ask if Jennifer can join me with a little treat. So the first person I wanna recognize is Diego Martinez from Yolo High. I'm so proud of Diego. His public speaking skills were amazing last year. He is currently a student at Sac City, and he is studying game design. And we just honor you today for your hard work, for showing up on those Thursday meetings, and for just being always prepared. Thank you. And you can stay up here because we're gonna get a picture. The second person I'd like to recognize is Anna Maxwell. She represented Washington Middle College. I want to tell you. Anna was actually our student board representative for two years. She's our youngest student board rep. She started in the ninth grade and also did her 10th grade year. She has went on and started Red Cross Club at her school, so Washington Middle's Red Cross Club, and they are having their first blood drive ever this year. She is also ASB treasurer, and she's a junior at Washington Middle now, so we still get two more years with her. Congratulations. I would like to now recognize Julia, who we call Jules, Shams, if she can come to the front, please. Julia represented River City High School last year as their student board rep. I want to celebrate Julia. First of all, she was my leadership student. So I'm very personally acquainted. Julia, you're amazing. She has went on and become the director of the Student Board Member Symposium Director for CSBA. Doesn't stop there. Last year was the first year that we took students to CSBA in Washington Unified, and she became the director of the symposium. She also took California State Council position as the Government Affairs on Local Level Director. So she's the Government Affairs on Local Level Director. We call it GOALS, right? So can we give it up for them? Thank you so much for your service.
You're gonna take a picture with the board.
And watch, and watch your step.
Thank you so much. Okay, now I am excited to introduce our new student board representatives for the 2024 and 2025 school year, who were selected through a democratic voting process by their peers. First, I would like to recognize Mariana Gutierrez from River City High School. Mariana had her K-8 experience at Westmore Oaks, and she is now currently a junior at River City. Okay, the next person I'd like to bring up is Alexia Jimenez from Washington Middle College. Alexia comes from Bridgeway, and she is an 11th grader at Washington Middle College right now. And then I'd like to introduce Anthony Juarez. Martinez from Yolo High School, who is currently a 12th grader and came from Elkhorn Middle School. These students were chosen not only for their leadership potential, but also for their passion for serving fellow students. And as student board representatives, they will play a vital role in our district. This position offers a unique opportunity to develop your leadership skills, including attending the CSBA Anaheim two-day student board conference, which we will be going to in December. And you will be, yes, it's all work-related, but you will be training alongside peers from all over California. And so I hope you use this training to make a meaningful impact on our school and our community and our district. I encourage you in front of everybody here in our community to embrace this responsibility fully. Congratulations once again to our new representatives, and I look forward to seeing you all do the great things this year.
All right, stay there. Are we gonna take? I know, we're not gonna get them together again because every time, so we'd like to take a picture with our new student, so you gotta cap back up. Sorry, mijitas.
And I want to say thank you to the parents and families of the student board representatives who bring them here every Thursday night. And just for coming out and supporting them and for growing amazing leaders that bless our district. So thank you.
June, June. Speaking of. Well, we're looking forward to you new student body coming up. If you want, I would suggest sticking around just so you could see what you guys are gonna be doing. You can learn a little bit, just a little bit. You don't have to stay all night, just for this part. He's like, dang it. He tries to sneak away. But yes, we are now going to do our student, student report. Student board member report. We'll do Anthony Juarez. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, first we got Bridgeway Eisen School, a big student out, oh, sorry. A big shout out to Mrs. Ronnie and all of her student leaders. They did a great job planning spare day and soccer fest kickoff. Bees raised over 14,000 at their annual read-a-athon this fall. Let's keep on reading. This month, our, our thrive assemblies focus on age and thrive being a hard worker. River Bank. Staff and students learning AIVAD, One-Patriot. Over. Ofrendas for Diana, or Dia de los Muertes month. Boss Spirit Week, October 28th through November 1st. Unite, unite days. October 19th, 4th and 5th, and October 30th, 6 through 8 to build here. Connections. All right, next we got Southport School. They had their attendance superhero day. October is kindness month. Wearing orange on Tuesday, kindness challenge on campus, kindness bingo. All right, next we got Stonegate. Their student leadership, them help kids turn in money for the Pennyware Wars fundraiser. This money goes back to the students to pay for their activities. Big shout out to Lynn Lyons Athletic Team, especially to the volleyball team. Oh, sorry about that. Westmore Oaks School, they held their first family math night last Tuesday. Families played math games, ate pizza, and had a lot of fun. Now we got Westfield Village School. They had an amazing PBIS kickoff day. Middle school had 90% attendance, and they had two grade levels with 100% attendance in fourth and sixth grade. The girls volleyball team is undefeated, 5-0. Go Wildcats. All right, next we got Washington Unified Virtual Academy. Back in August, they had a successful back-to-school math family night and held parents and students orientation for all, all our families. In September, they had two in-person days, one general day and one focus on art. This month, they are looking forward to, to their next in-person day on Friday, October 18th, which will be math-focused. Next we got Washington Adult School. This week's student learning English, a second language shared. Presentation about their culture, allowing them to learn from one another backgrounds. Congress, oh, couldn't, sorry about that. Congrats to the camera, to Carmela, to, no, sorry about that. Carmen Malaro for passing the citizenship test, becoming a U.S. citizen. We got Yolo High School. Last week, Yolo High School hosted its first-ever spirit week, and everyone had an amazing time. Then handball war is finally done, and the students are eager to kick off for their first handball tournament the next week. River City High School, RCHS celebrating homecoming last week. Thank you to everyone who helped make all of the activities possible. We got Washington Middle College High School. They received an excellence in education award from YCOE for outstanding programs and partnership with Sacramento City College. Students outperformed the state test in English, math, and science. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Anthony. So you all know now what to expect when you're here, so that way you're not like, what do I do? So you learn. And so thank you so very much. This is your opportunity to continue to stay. You can vote with us, you can engage in the conversation. Or if you feel, I did my due diligence, I'm good, you can do that too, and we will not throw no shade your way.
We know you got cake.
Yeah, we know you got cake, so you might want to stick, you want, want to get to that too.
I'm really sorry, but they did give me a really nice-looking cake.
Yes, I know, so.
I wish I could share it, but it's pretty small.
It's really small, yeah. It's okay. Don't you worry, we're not.
But thank you so much for having me here.
Of course, and thank you for gracing us with your presence. We really do appreciate it. Good job. It's gonna be a good year, I can feel it.
Can we get kudos to June for kind of cultivating and making real what we've been imagined for our student board members? So kudos to June and the team for kind of building that infrastructure, because I think we've all talked about it for years. And I'm gonna put out there, like those of us who are gonna be at CSBA, that if, if we can have a dinner or a meal, break some bread with our student board members while they're, they're there. I know that we run, run them, you know, we kind of, it's pretty packed. No, it's me. It's my fan. Sorry, it's, it's, it's hot in here, clearly. So if, if we can do that, that would be great.
So we'll make that happen. Thank you so much. And now moving on to our next association reports, WSDA.
Good evening, trustees, President Coffey, Vice President, is it Vice President? No. Pur, Pazati, sorry. I'm out of it, trustee, sorry, sorry.
It's been a long.
We're all good. Superintendent Hildreth and Cabinet. Let me start off first by saying I get so excited when I see student leaders. It, it reminds me that, that capacity will continue. And particularly, it was exciting to see Julia. Julia grew up with my daughter at Mile Preschool and then went to Bridgeway. And seeing someone who was once this big, this big, and now moving into leadership is super exciting. And I want to encourage the school leaders and the school board members. I know you are all gonna go off to great places. I hope some of you. I hope some of you come back to West Sacramento and lead from home, because we need leaders here, and it's just super exciting to see. Just on a positive note, because I'm feeling really positive, I looked over to my right when I was sitting and I, I looked and I saw Shay, Autry, and Monique, and I thought to myself, how blessed I am to get to meet with these professionals when I have the opportunity. I actually look forward to going to cabinet meetings, because the conversations are robust, they're genuine, they're interactive, and always with positive intent. And so, shout out to you, you, you bring a smile to my face, but don't count on it always. I wanted to share with the board and the cabinet that one of the reasons I've been released in a grant from CTA is so that I can go around the district and have one-on-one conversations. And to this date, only less than a quarter of the way through the year, I've been able to meet with over 110 teachers and have conversations, and that's over a quarter of my membership. And I don't want to share the wealth, I'm hoping that we can arrange an opportunity for me to discuss with Cabinet and with Cheryl, the information I'm gaining. There's a lot of positive information, there's a lot of opportunity for growth, and I think WUSD should be able to utilize this time as well as labor to take this information and make things better for our students. Uh, I wanted to point out, I, it's only, I'm only going to say it once, but I know that we're all aware, we're in a very divisive political season right now. And I think sometimes we forget, we go home and we watch the news, and we take for granted that there are some terrible things being said about people that look different. And they've been going on, these things have been going on since 2016, and I think it's almost become commonplace. But we need to remember that our students are hearing these things, and they're taking them in, and we need to make sure that we, that, that we verbally acknowledge that this is happening, and this is not how we see students. And I'm hoping we can all make a commitment to do that over the next, what, less than a month, that we can remind our students that we see them, we value them, and we don't believe in this nonsense that we hear on the news every night that certain people are spewing. And we need to make sure that we educate the students that maybe buy into some of that stuff, that that is not acceptable and that is not WUSD. So I'm hoping we can commit to do that together. I wanted to celebrate the coaches, one day a week this year, I'm a coach, and I didn't really know what coaches did before I started to, to do this myself, and I've got to tell you, we have some phenomenal individuals here, and I hope that I can use my position to encourage teachers to utilize the skills of the folks that we have in WUSD as coaches. They have unbelievable resources and unbelievable knowledge, and I want to just thank the board and thank the cabinet for making that available to our teachers, and I hope we can find creative ways to get more people to engage in that process. Just a couple of notes. In the agenda tonight, there is a section on data sharing with the Home Run Program. My understanding is that the data sharing is going to be opt-in, but it's not listed on there. I want to make sure that that's the case, that people's private information isn't going to be sharing unless they opt, shared, unless they opt to share. I understand the programs have a need to, to measure efficacy, and I get that, but we want to make sure that we are being diligent and secure with information of our students and teachers. The last thing, and I was talking to Dr. Burns earlier about this, safety is kind of, safety issues are kind of popping up again in the district, and they're making teachers and students alike feel really uneasy. And so I just want everybody to have, to be proactive and think about these things and try and head off concerns before they start. And part of that is being purposeful in conversations, which Jay and I are engaging in, and I hope that we can continue that with the rest of the cabinet to make sure that we are being proactive and working together to make sure we have safe schools and safe environments. And that's it, no firing language from me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for our CSEA report, and I see our VP, Ms. Ruth.
Good evening, President Coffey, trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, Cabinet, public, staff. This time of year, there's a lot going on. Every site, every department, every staff member is most likely feeling the plate is too full feeling. I am so proud of our members and the staff, including admin, who are literally running from the beginning to the end of their shifts, who are working tirelessly to keep our students safe, and who are connecting, supporting, nurturing, feeding, driving, cleaning, and dedicating their time to the betterment of the district as a whole. I see you and appreciate and value you all. As we sift through the priorities of what to share tonight, I am going to focus on what are the most pressing concerns our membership has in hopes that we can continue to progress and move forward together. When classified members are supported and valued, we all succeed. Safety continues to be concern for many of our paraeducators and campus staff. When we submit workplace violence complaints to our site supervisors or admin, we expect workplace violence reduction plans, that they're not only in place, but they're followed, and that these plans are accessible. If they are not, our complaints will be forwarded to HR. Safety concerns require action, and there's no gray area. Para's, no employees, in fact, should not, should be going home bruised or bloodied on a regular basis. Violence reduction plans, incident logs are now mandatory under Senate Bill 553, the Workplace Violence Reduction Bill. And it's important to note that there are no provisions or exemptions in this plan that says those who work in sped classrooms are, for any reason, not afforded a workplace free of violence. Last board meeting, President Gondara let you all know also about the restorative TOSA position that was created, a cost team meeting. We understand those meetings now are steering committee meetings, and that members of those committees have an opportunity to vote. That's great, we are okay with the process, we just respectfully reserve the right to be at the bargaining table for any new positions created in this district, specifically with any impacts that could affect our classified members in any way. So this can be a collaborative process, and we want to be at the table to discuss informal negotiations. That position was shared on a document for grant-funded positions, because it's funded, obviously, by community schools, and it was approved as a one-year position. And so we want to ensure that that actually is, in fact, a one-year position, and that that document be fixed and shown that it was only one year, not three years, because transparency matters. On that note, budget alignment is listed as a future board item on this agenda and with a to-be-determined date. If there still needs to be budget alignment and reduction after the previous meeting when we were told for the next three years we were fiscally sound, we, uh, we reserve or request that any future administrative positions such as the vacant director position that is going to come after tonight not be filled. If there needs to be budget alignment and reduction, shouldn't those one-time hired grant-funded positions not be moved to the general fund as well? Lastly, oh, sorry, as we move towards our contract negotiations pertaining to salary, we want to be very clear that we need and deserve fiscal transparency. The last report stated we are in good standing with healthy reserves, so that's what we believe we are in. On the agenda you have before you tonight, action item number seven regarding the sharing of students' personal information. It says all students on there, so we're in agreement with WSTA that you should be able to opt-in. And I'm standing before you and saying, I don't agree with this as a union leader, a staff member, a parent of students in the district. As some of you are up there, you should be able to opt-in if you are interested in your data being shared. And I think that's it, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. All right, and now we are moving on to our public comments. And looking for my disclaimer. At our, at our regular board meeting held on February 9th, 2023, the board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board but not read into the record during the meeting. Members of the public may address the board on the topics of the board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives its item limit for any item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the right of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting, meeting may be a violation of the student's right to privacy and thus the speaker may be legal, legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it is important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. And with that, I believe we have a few, or one?
We have one public comment request this evening, and it is from Patrice Griffith.
Good evening. I'm going to make this quick, because it's hot. So, um, first I just want to start off by saying congratulations to the student leaders. It is such a joy to see students step up and really become advocates for themselves, for other students, especially, shout out to Julia, I've known her since she was a little girl, Mariana as well, so it's, it's awesome to see them. I wanted to share something that came from a parent voice and a few coaches, the need for an athletic trainer on staff. So, looks like someone's agreeing with me. And I just want to throw that out there, I know it's additional funds, but I was like, okay, I will share that tonight, they could not be here. We do unfortunately have injuries with a number of student athletes at times. My daughter plays flag football at River City, and Monday night unfortunately fractured her arm at, in a way game. So, someone else hurt their knee the other day, it happens. So I just want to put that out there for the board on behalf of some concerned parents and a handful of coaches. I do want to touch basis on a comment that I attempted to make last meeting, I know there was a little snag during public comment, no worries, it happens, I get it. It was in regards to the shade structure, which you may have received information on by now, but ironically, I put in two shade structures at the largest childcare facility in Sacramento that holds 214 children. I installed those shade structures, not personally, but went through the process, and it took like six months to get our shade structures. And I know that time is of the essence in projects, but right now, time is just, it's not there for anyone doing any type of project, as you all know. A big part of that happens to be the way that it's produced, where it's produced, and the labor in producing that, which again is why I'm so big on trade schools, because we need that labor to do these jobs. And we see on the end when we're trying to execute those projects, the delays that can occur, and those delays, more than likely than not, they equate to dollars at the end of the day. But, so lead times are extensive, when you get that product in, I'm sure you guys power coded it to make sure that it was safe for the weather. So I just wanted to let you know from experience that, that is the norm, it's not anything like specific to you all, that's just what's going on in the area. And at that, I will step away, have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Thank you. All right, and now we're on to our information discussion items. Cool Schools Grant Update, Ms. Monique Stovall.
Thank you, I'll try to get the microphone right in the, the right space for all of our heights. Thank you. This evening, we are here to provide an update to the Cool Schools Grant. As a reminder, we were notified almost a year ago that we were the recipients of the Cool Schools Grant through the Texas Tree Foundation, which is part of a CAL FIRE grant. This evening, the team is here to provide an update on the work they've been doing with our schools and our school community as we progress through this grant.
Thank you, good evening. Well, we are super excited to be here. My name is Samantha Bradley, I'm the Cool Schools Program Director, and I do work for the Texas Trees Foundation. I'm here with one of my colleagues from Tree Davis, Torin Donovan, and we also have Jaime Oretta and, and Emma Swan in the audience, who are going to be helpful if you guys have additional questions for us. So, we just want to provide an update, like we said about six months ago, we were here, gave you guys kind of like the look ahead, we hadn't really started working with the schools yet, and we've made a lot of progress, we're really excited to share that with you guys. Let me know. Sorry. So just as a reminder about the Cool Schools Program, and so, like I said, we'd started in Dallas, and we, you know, have moved it to Sacramento as well, and we're really excited with our additional partnerships here. But essentially, this, this grant is funded through CAL FIRE. The program itself really looks to connect students and teachers to nature through expansive tree planting, creating fun and experiential learning opportunities in play areas. We're really looking at evidence-based design, we're taking our time to plan these, we're listening to the community, and we're also using research to tell us what's best for, you know, students and how students benefit from having time outside, having learning opportunities, and really learning about environmental justice issues, as well as just the impacts and the kind of co-benefits that we get when we look at greening school grounds.
So y'all may remember that there were some criteria that we were trying to make sure we met in this project, and to do it really well, also focusing on certain campuses. So we did choose to focus on Westmore Oaks, or this is a conversation we all had together, Riverbank Elementary, Yolo Education Center, and River City High School. There are criteria that CAL FIRE had, making sure that we were affecting the communities that are suffering the most environmental need and are showing economic need as well. We did discuss the concepts of including Westfield and Elkhorn, but given their construction timelines, it didn't line up for us to participate with those schools at this time, though there could be opportunities in the future for that. Next slide. Yeah, next slide. So, as Sam said, we were spending a lot of time, we're spending a lot of time in a very short window, I do want to stress that, because of the grant itself having to be done by March of 2026. So we've been going, you know, very fast, but also very intentional with our process. We've been meeting with all of the schools with great regularity, working closely with the principals, but at each of the campuses, really trying to connect with as much of the community as possible. So obviously, teachers and paraeducators, but also parents and students and anybody else who, you know, could potentially be giving us input. Emma was, has been a huge part of that, and we'd love to talk more with y'all if you have questions about it. But we did, if you go to the next slide, sort of segmented out into two main stretches. So just after we talked to y'all in the spring, we hit the ground running with our first round of input, and we asked two primary questions. What are the needs on this campus? Don't tell us what you want, but what are the conditions that need to be cured to make this campus even more excellent than it is right now? And then what should be prioritized? If we only have a certain amount of funding to work with. we only have certain amount of funding to work with, you know, how do we rank those things together? Um, the folks from the landscape design firm then took all that information back and they came up with initial concepts. And then we came back at the very beginning of the school year, um, hung out at the back to school nights and then did some deep dive focus groups, um, last month and, you know, really got into it. Is this what you're thinking about? What is missing? What works? What doesn't work? And then we've been making tweaks since then. It was extremely rewarding when we were at Westmore Oaks and two of the teachers walked in, they looked at the design, they said, "We feel heard. This is perfect. This is exactly what we wanted." So, we love to hear that feedback. Obviously we want to hear that feedback too. If it's like, "That doesn't work at all" or, you know, "What if we did it this way?" So we've been working with all of that, um, and we are interested in sharing more with you about that.
So we're gonna give you a little bit of overview. So, um, while each school is, you know, uniquely designed based on their specific needs, every campus is different, student populations are different, um, there is kind of an overarching theme of all of the campuses based on our program and also, you know, best green schoolyard practices and things that the, the grant is really trying to achieve. And so, um, looking at, um, it through that lens, we're, we're talking about expansive tree plantings, as I spoke of, but also really other greening opportunities across the campuses. Um, some campuses are, are excited to get some arboretum, some infiltration gardens, pollinator groves. Some of these are going to be really great educational opportunities. There are also co-benefits, right? They're great for the environment. They're going to change the landscape as well. Um, reminder, uh, we're, we're working to really have, um, a maintenance plan, to have maintenance dollars for five years after the, the life of this grant. After we basically implement everything, there will be money to go into upkeep, um, that to take care for the trees, um, you know, irrigation systems in place. And so looking at it from that as well as a lot of neat, um, really awesome, if I do, um, outdoor learning areas, some really, really innovative, um, nature-based playgrounds, active spaces, amphitheaters, gathering spaces. Like I said, not every campus is different, but these cross-cutting themes of opportunities for students to get outside.
So we're going to share with you briefly each of the campuses, but since it's so much information, we figured we'd just start with Riverbank and give it sort of the most amount of information so you understand our process. Um, so this is that priority that I was talking about. So in talking to the parents, the teachers, the students, Principal Rodriguez, you know, we identified that there is a real issue on that campus with especially the sixth through eighth graders not really having their own stuff and they're sort of off on the west side there on campus and it's just a big old blacktop. So it's hot. It's not age appropriate for them. Um, we also recognize that there are opportunities to do more gathering outside, you know, more sort of like cool nature solutions like Samantha's talking about. So that's, you know, where we started with Riverbank. And if you can move on to the next slide. And here's, you know, just a flyover. We're looking at the current condition, um, on the left and on the right, you know, just, just that bird's eye view of what the, the changes would be. So you can really see on the left side or the west side, you know, we're ripping out a lot of concrete. You know, that feels good to the school. We're losing the basketball courts, but they're not being utilized. Um, but we're putting in a really amazing space there. And then on the, on the east side by the, um, the K through five or pre-K, um, you're seeing a nature trail, an outdoor classroom, enhancing the garden that's there. The really amazing stuff that's going on in that campus. If you can share the next slide, please. So here's the things that we're talking about. So those needs that we talked about, you know, we're talking about age appropriate, older play. We're talking about shade and comfort for everyone, gathering spaces. We heard a lot about the fact that there does seem to be some conflicts between different communities on the campus. So let's create some unity there, um, where we can, where we can. And the landscape designers are really brilliant at this stuff. Of course, lots of trees, you know, we're talking about some public art as well, which we're really excited about. So that's, you know, I'll drill down a little bit further on the next slide. We can show you some elements. So this is the west side. This is really, you know, toward the sixth through eighth graders. You know, we're talking about a walking path. We're talking about parkour, um, and climbing elements for them to get those ya-yas out, you know, um, and swings and things like that. I mean, we heard a lot also throughout this whole conversation about, you know, kids that are suffering from autism. So getting some spinning, some swinging, things like that. Also some sensory, like just making as much opportunity as possible with these pretty big campus, you know, but doing more there, which is, we're really excited for it. And you can see we have this sculpture. Um, hold on one moment. So this next slide is utterly amazing. So, um, our designers, uh, came up with this, but, um, in name only. Yeah. Uh, so yeah, so this would be going as a sort of a centerpiece on that west side, um, given that the mascot is what 27 foot long, six foot tall, something like that, um, play space for kids that we're just, we're pretty enamored with for sure. Yeah. Uh, next slide, please. Um, and then this would be the east side. So, you know, and putting in some more outdoor walking space, the outdoor classroom, um, uh, what we call an arboretum. So lots of different kinds of trees, lots of different heights, some shrubs as well. So we're really, really excited about this whole design. Um, so, yeah, that's it for me.
So we're gonna go a little bit more, uh, quicker past, uh, some of these other schools. They all are designed just as well, but you know, so we're excited to share with you those later and give you guys more updates. Um, but essentially, Westmore Oaks, um, also kind of has, um, a similar, you know, when you have a, those, those K through eight, right, schools, you're dealing with like these populations where a lot of times those play features go for the younger grades. And so we repeatedly heard again at Westmore Oaks is that they needed, that the middle school students needed a space to, to have a PE at recess, right? There's kind of like that, um, area on the back end of the campus where they, you know, right by the basketball courts where they hang out, but there's really nothing there. And so again, creating a really awesome space where students, um, have opportunities for active play, um, a loop trail, right, for the PE teacher. But then it's also surrounded by nature. So adding trees underneath these, these big two existing oak trees, putting, um, kind of a reading nook, outdoor learning opportunities, right? Kind of these like, these, um, you know, respite areas. Um, and so really just transforming this space into, you know, just like a space where students want to hang out. It's going to be cooler there. Um, it's really going to change, um, it's going to change the space completely. Um, also there's other areas of the space, the campus activated for, uh, the younger students as well. A lot of, um, sensory spaces for the students in some of those courtyards. Um, again, just looking at opportunities that we can cool the space and add nature to it. Um, River City, as you guys know, a big campus, right? And so it was a big job to prioritize areas. Um, but we did listen to a lot of students there. I think the most student participation happened there. I think actually one of the former students, Jules gave us a lot of feedback. And so it was really neat to see. Um, and some, one of the, some of the themes coming out of there was really creating more, um, gathering spaces, uh, for students around campus, creating kind of this identity, using art as wayfinding, um, was kind of a theme was being brought up. Um, you know, activating spaces where students can hang out in. Um, and then kind of a priority area was moving the garden and creating an outdoor, uh, learning lab that will be available to more students, going to be more accessible, closer to students on campus, um, as well as, um, adding a lot of trees to that campus, uh, and creating a fitness area, I think for the PE teacher was a high priority as well. And then Yolo Education, one of our, our favorite schools. No, we don't have a favorite. So I'm just kidding. Um, but thinking about the transformation and just the, the impact that this can have, um, I don't know how to put it, um, but you know, if you've, you've seen that campus, it, it needs, yes, right. Okay. You guys can say it, right? Yeah. So it, it needs, it needs a facelift and it needs to feel like a school that students want to be at and that they belong to and they feel a part of. And so really I think the lens in that school is how do we, you know, pull up some asphalt and really think about a space that is safe, that is relaxing, that like, you know, so if you're, you know, if you're a student that's already maybe, you know, having difficulties with school, how do we make that a space that you want to go to, um, that's supportive while also adding opportunities for them to play as well or have active spaces, places to hang out in. And so I think that the physical transformation there is going to be quite amazing. Um, when you start, you know, just that, that gray to green concept is going to be really obvious there. And so we're really excited to dig in. We've got some really great input from the students and teachers there as well. And so kind of next steps, uh, showed this to you guys before, but essentially we're on track to finish our designs and our engagement for those designs by the end of, um, this year. We're going to be starting, uh, uh, greening installation next summer, hopefully. We're going to try to do as much as possible over the summer to give the most, uh, like lowest impact to, you know, disrupting student time, um, and really hopefully have some completed spaces by the end of this year. Um, it's important to know, and Torin's going to talk about this a little bit, is that we're a program and not just an implementer. And so we have education that's going to continue go on, engagement opportunities that are going to continue past the design. We're really going to keep the, the community involved, the student, um, and the teachers involved. And we're going to keep listening, keep updating them and hopefully, you know, make this an ongoing project.
Yeah. So briefly, um, we are, uh, very much comprehensive in this approach. Um, so we've already been working with the River City students. Um, we've actually just started piloting, um, with the ELOP program at Westmore and Riverbank in partnership with Ryan Carroll, um, and really trying to figure out like, how do we make sure that, you know, the students are enriched by this experience, not just physically but socially? So, you know, what is this? Why are we doing this? What's coming on to my campus? And then for the teachers as well, how do I use these things best? Um, so we're, we're doing that now. We're going to be continuing to implement it. And really the engagement overall is something that we think about is not just, we needed input and so that's great. Thanks. We're done. But like, let's keep talking to the parents. Let's keep talking to the neighborhoods. We'll have these amazing planting events starting in February. So, um, yeah, we're really thinking about this as comprehensively as we can.
And so that's, that's about it. So we'll be looking to finish our designs up this year. We'll have a design reveal hopefully in the beginning of this, uh, beginning of the year next year with our first tree planting, like Torin said, in February. And so that's going to be, uh, with students, with, um, community members. And so we're really looking to make that an interactive, uh, and learning opportunity. And so we're open to questions. We thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
All right. Do we have any comments from the board? Go ahead, Vice President.
It's more just questions. Um, so I love that we're planting trees as well as giving other spaces, um, kind of more of a facelift for us to do outdoor classrooms. Um, I guess my question is what kind of trees are we planting? Uh, and what's the rate of growth on those trees? Because that's kind of, you know, something we, we immediately need shade, right? And we immediately need trees. So,
So, uh, Tree Davis is a unique opportunity, right? Our name is Tree Davis. We're more than trees, we're more than Davis. But given the fact that there is so much great information that's coming out of university and the forest service is based there, we think very seriously about species choice.
Right.
Uh, so we work off of a climate-ready tree palette. So not just native, um, but native are great, um, but also trees that quite honestly are coming from Texas because that's our future climate. So we're thinking 50 years down the line about what's going to be appropriate. Um, yeah, hardy trees, trees that can handle the rigors of a school. So we do have actually pretty, at this point, we're up above 40 different species. Um, so we are thinking about fast growing, but, but good branch strength, um, pest resistant, heat resistant, frost resistant, like all of the things, um, and biodiverse, or having a, a very diverse palette of trees because, you know, that's just also a best practice. Um, and they're going to be, we're setting irrigation for every single tree. So that really ensures positive growth, um, best is that, you know, any tree will grow well, much better if it's irrigated and we're doing,
Deep rooting trees?
Uh, yeah. So no, so no bad concrete. Yeah. No, no, no infrastructure i- issues. And then as Sam mentioned, what's that?
No, no, just being conscious.
Yeah, yeah.
We've had conversations all day, a few days ago, I think. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
I was like, no, you could speak, just put in the mic. Yeah, sorry. That we wouldn't, we've been, uh, we had almost a day-long conversation with the maintenance, uh, and, um, operations team, um, the past couple of days. And it was really digging into all this. Like, and so we were looking at the plans and they're saying, "Hey, can you offset this 10 feet more from the sidewalk? We need to make sure we have the..." So we're talking about all those issues. And so it's that balance between like having that where, you know, the trees planted, where students are going to be able to access them and with really thinking about maintenance and how we're going to make sure that these are the least kind of, you know, uh, yeah, headache as possible. But like, then at the end of the day, the trees are going to take time. So this is just that, that balance where it's not going to be immediate. Um,
That I understand. I think the, the question I was looking at is also deep rooting so we don't lose them during a massive storm, which we've had happen.
Yeah. And so we, I mean, so with the irrigation, that helps with root strength. Um, and then we will be going and visiting the trees with great frequency, remultching, weeding out, and then doing deep watering as well. So yeah, we're very, we're appreciative that we're able to do it because typically state grants don't allow you to do that, but we can. So, yeah. Thank you for asking.
Nice. Anybody else?
I mean, along the same lines, I know it's going to take time. How long does, does it take? Will it take these trees to mature once they're planted? On average?
Yeah. I mean, let's say, let's say 10 years. I mean, the benefits, I, I mean, honestly, I think the benefits are immediate. Like I've planned, I remember planting at Elder Creek Elementary and like a hummingbird landed the minute a tree got planted. It was like so relieved. There was finally a tree there. So, um, but yeah, I mean, we, you start to see realized shade benefits within five to 10 years.
No, love the presentation. Love the fact that even if they're baby trees, that nature's coming in, all of the oxygen, et cetera. So,
And we are thinking about maybe some larger stock trees,
Okay.
in the more public spaces to make that immediate impact. We like planting younger trees, quite honestly, because they grow long, better, longer.
And they grow with the students.
Yep.
Grow with the students.
Yeah, right.
Okay. So, but just, uh, that was just my question. Like, okay, I think the question is how, people will know how long will it take, but it's also good to hear that you're going to put in some more mature trees.
I am so excited. I'm so excited. I'm like crying inside. I'm so excited. Uh, my favorite place to be with kids is outside. Um, and we, this board, um, has made sure that we have outdoor ed. So we take our kids outdoor and we pay for it for all of our students. Um, and then we've been talking, um, some of our sites, the PTOs have been talking for years about trying to get an outdoor learning space. And that was really hard for other people to understand. Like, well, what does that mean? Can we do that? I don't know. And there were so many barriers that kept getting thrown up. It still hasn't happened. Um, and so I, I'm just so excited about this. I'm, oh, I'm so happy. As a teacher, as a mom, as a everything. So, um, and when we first brought you all in, um, you know, we didn't know, I didn't know that all of this was going to come with it. And so this is really exciting. Um, a couple of things then to think about. Um, one would just be that this can now, you're sort of breaking down that barrier for our other sites to now reimagine and be thinking about it. Even though we don't have all the funding, we can now start thinking differently because there are ways to do things that, that don't cost as much. This is such a good gift, but I think it's going to have an impact across our district. Um, and then one thing that I would, um, really the only thing I have to ask is that, um, you've done so much research on what trees work well here and what happens. And I know I've brought in, um, uh, city employees to look at the trees that are pulling up and we're lucky to have sidewalks, not everywhere it does in our community, but that are tearing up sidewalks because the roots are there. And so I hope that we can also maybe, this is a good opportunity for us to connect with the city about what trees they're using too. Um, and then we can share best practices because there's clearly been so much work done. Um, but no, nothing but excitement. Thank you.
I'll jump in real quick. I mean, we have been working really closely with the city as well. So it's an ongoing dialogue. Um, and this is a nationwide movement. Um, you know, CalFire was wonderful to fund this, um, but you're seeing it across the country. So I do think, you know, the opportunities are going to continue to present themselves as potential grant funding, um, and just the general desire from the community is going to grow because people, some people are very excited. Some people are a little bit wary, but I think more and more people are going to feel the same way that you do as we go, go further.
Thank you.
It's good for kids.
One more question.
Yeah.
Student perspective, like that's, that was another presentation, but they're all throughout your design. Can you talk to a little bit, to a, a little bit, uh, about their experience? And I love, it's not just like where the end of the level is trees, but also I love this idea of community engagement and process. Yes.
So this is Emma Swan, who's our community engagement manager, who's been, came onto the team after we presented to you before and was doing amazing work, working throughout the community here.
How you doing everybody? My name is Emma. Like the girl's name, like Torin said, I'm the community engagement manager for the Cool Schools, uh, like Yellow Project. During our, uh, design charrettes, not only did we get to engage with a lot of adults, but we got to engage with youth. And a lot of the perspectives were just kind of distilled down to, "Man, I'm not going to be here for this." But we twisted that into basically saying, we spun it. It's like, we gave them an opportunity to say, you know, "This is your chance to be the leader and the mentor that you wish you had." And that kind of like brought the excitement back. So as we were talking earlier about how like Julia was like in her leadership group was like one, a really big, uh, uh, group in River City that talked about it. They talked a lot about liking to have a space where they would want to come to school. They talked a lot about how River City specifically is really hot, or some of like the really young kids, for instance, for instance, on like Riverbank, we're talking about how having swings is like the greatest thing in the world. You mean, we actually get swings? Um, and so like really, when you talk to a lot of youth and you really like give them the chance, it's really interesting to see that they want to be outside. And we just got a chance to hear that excitement from them and just watch them be like, "Really? Are you serious?" And, uh, the last thing I'll say about it is that we did the, the charrettes earlier in the year and then we came back after the summer and there were so many students who were like, "I didn't think you were actually going to be back." And then when we got to show them some of the designs, they were like, "Wow, like, oh, so that you're serious? Okay. No, actually I want this and I want this and blah, blah." And so it was, it was really cool. Once they knew that we actually had the funding, we were serious and ready to listen to them. And engagement is going to continue. So we're trying to engage with like the construction club on River City High. We don't know how that's going to go, but to see how we can maybe give them an opportunity to shadow in on the construction. Again, we don't know how all this is going to go, but we're, we're taking their voices seriously and trying to include them in the process.
Yeah. I love that integration with our after-school program, our clubs, our NCCT. It's, it's, it's actually what we've been talking about for a long time, kind of a really model program, right? So thank you for that.
And I'm so sorry. Uh, I have a coworker. Her name is Trini Cruz. Uh, she is our engagement manager and she's going to be leading on the after-school program and education and stuff. She's not able to present on her program here today, but we also have a full other person with a lot of like education experience who's going to be helping us person with a lot of like education experience who's going to be helping us make sure this interfaces well with like the school grounds and current curriculum, so.
We all really love it because we, I mean, we talk about modernization with our BOM, but this is completely different and fully community-engaged, student and parent-driven. It's just exactly what we're about. So really, I think everybody has the feel-good right now about this project.
Speaking of feel-goods, you know, when we start to plant the first tree, hopefully we have some of those students who were there, maybe they moved on to the, well, if it's at Riverbank, they moved on to the high school, or if they are in high school and they moved on to the real world, like they were able to come back, we could definitely reach out and invite them so that way they can see their vision, what they wanted, come back and be there for that. Because I think that that kind of closes the loop and makes them feel like it wasn't just a planting of a seed, literally, and they get to see it, you know, get it grow as well, so.
Anybody else have anything? Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you. This is so exciting and I think one of the big pieces is when we are talking to our students that whether it was doing surveys or the strategic plan, it is helping them see that they are investing in their siblings. So a lot of times they're talking about, I won't be here, but I have a brother, a sister or cousin in elementary, and I know this will help them. So they are able to see how what they're sharing is going to help somebody that they care about in the community to have a different type of experience. So thank you so much.
And so I just want to say one last thing. See, I know we didn't get to see the other sites, but Riverbank, and that's my school. I went there when I was in middle school. My mom went there when it was a high school. So the fact, and my kids are there now as it's an elementary school, so.
Pick the right school.
Pick the right school to show. She remembers some of the things and she goes, oh, the trees are gone. Because when she was there, they were little trees and now they were big trees and then the winds took them. And now when I was there, I'm looking at it, I was like, oh, yeah, I remember, that's where my teacher, we, you know, that side where the kid, the little kids' area, that whole area, we did a reenactment of the Civil War. We had a cannon and everything, and we used long rulers as our, we had to like pretend that they, we were putting the gunpowder in and going, and one was the north, the other was the south, and you didn't want to be the south, but you had, there had to be a south. So seeing all that and now seeing where it's going to be, like, everybody makes memories and you guys are totally doing that. And I'm really, really, really excited to see what is going to come because, yes, families definitely, just generation after generation are there at these sites. So thank you guys for all the work that you've done. We see it and we know that you see our students and our families, so thank you.
I just want to say, it is the leadership of, you know, this body, Dr. Hildreth, Monique Stovall, is making it, I mean, we're having a great time. We're getting a lot done, you know, Daniel, Carrie, I mean, it's so, y'all are making it possible, you know? We're able to do everything we've been hoping to do. We know y'all have a lot of things to deal with. The principals have a lot to deal with, but everybody's been amazingly gracious, so we appreciate that.
I'm glad we made it utterly possible.
That's a mom joke. All right, well, thank you so very much. And now on to our consent agenda items. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
All right. Are there any comments from the board on any of these?
No, I move when ready.
All right. We have Trustee Wong move, Trustee Venejas seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I too say aye. And on to our action items. First action item, approval of the Amendment Number Two of the TerraCon Consulting, Inc. for chlorine baseline testing services for the ESER III projects. Monique Stovall.
Thank you. This evening I am joined by or with our Facilities Director, Dan Banowitz, and we are requesting approval for Amendment Number Two for TerraCon Consulting. Amendment Number One was to add in soil characterization and TerraCon does soil work for our projects, make sure everything in the soil is good to go. And we're requesting Amendment Number Two to add chlorine baseline testing for $16,200, bringing the entire contract to $178,700, paid via the ESER III funds.
All right. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Are there any comments from the board?
I move.
I'll second.
Trustee Wong moves, Clerk Kirby Gonzalez seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right. And now approval of Amendment Number One of the Managed Facility Solutions for Moving Services for the Westfield Village Modernization Project. Monique Stovall, welcome back.
Thank you. We are still super excited that we were able to open the modernized campus at Westfield Village. And part of our commitment to our school was ensuring that we had moving services available after they returned to Westfield to be able to support our students and staff. We did need a little more support than we had planned, and so we are requesting approval of the amendment to add $2,763.48 to the contract, which would bring it to $102,097.38, paid via the Measure Z Fund.
All right. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Do we have any comments or questions from the board?
I move.
Move by Vice President Pizzotti, second by Trustee Venejas, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right, don't go nowhere. Approval of the Contract with Network Management Corporation for Technology Equipment Installation for the Westfield Village School Modernization Project. Welcome back.
Thank you. So as with all projects, whether we're doing a huge construction project or even a project at home, after it's completed, then we see some things that we wish we would have done a little bit better. And therefore, at this time, we are requesting a contract with Network Management Corporation for Technology Equipment to add additional security cameras to be able to monitor some of those places within the campus that we just didn't know we wouldn't be able to see. So working with the school administration, they've identified some additional needs. So we're requesting approval of this agreement with Network Management Corporation, NMC is what we often call it, for $49,461.80, paid via the Measure Z Fund.
Do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Are there any comments from the board?
I move.
I second.
Trustee Venejas moves, Trustee Wong seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right. Approval for Change Order Number One for the Westmore Oaks Field Project at Westmore Oaks Elementary School. Monique Stovall.
Okay. Last week, I believe, on the second, the fields at Westfield are open. And so I've heard that for many, many years, we had someone literally hand-water the fields to keep them green at that time. And as we all know, these fields have not looked the best. It did not reflect how we feel about our students and staff. Now, it's a beautiful green field. I was by there yesterday, I saw the kids playing soccer out in the field, and we have irrigation. However, we did identify with the irrigation, there was some unforeseen conditions with the irrigation where there was pressure issues that they needed to address. Therefore, we are requesting approval for the change order that occurred for $30,000. It's paid, this entire contract is paid via the Measure V and State Facilities Program funding. This completely eliminates, continues to eliminate all of the Measure V. All of the Measure V funding was allocated to finish up with this particular project and we're still on course to do so.
Sorry. We have any public comments?
No public comments.
I have a comment, but anybody else on the board? Go ahead.
So I think I asked a question last time regarding Measure V being up. Was this, or I think the question I asked was, are we, have we expended all of Measure V? And you told us, yes. Now we're seeing $30,000 more added on to that. What I'm trying to square up is how are, how is, how are the, how are we not short $30,000 on, or coming out of our general fund?
Additional funding comes through the State Facilities Program. This is, this project is funded by Measure V and the State Facilities Program. So the, if I understand correctly, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, that additional $30,000 will come from the other funding source, the State Facilities Program Matching Funds. This is a.
So Measure V is tapped?
Measure V is tapped.
Once we're done with the, sorry. Once we're completed with the River City asphalt replacement, Measure V will be tapped. It'll be completed, so we'll be done with that whole one.
It's from the State Facilities, not Measure V.
Yeah, we received 1.75 million in matching funds for this project and that's what, we're using a portion of that to cover it.
Got it. Thank you.
But the full 229,460 is coming from both, and that's why we have to put that on, on the agenda, right? Okay.
Did I understand?
Yes, you can ask.
So we are allocating, or we're going to use all of our matching funds possible or not?
At some point we will. Right now, we're doing these projects to finish up Measure V and the overage will be, you know, used for this 1.75 million. And then we'll sell whatever's left over, we will, you know, we'll determine what's going to be next.
Okay. So we don't, this isn't a case like some of our grants where if we don't use it all, we have to give it back or something like that. This is matching funds that we've captured, we have.
And then, okay, yes.
Thank you.
And my question was just more of the irrigation system. So was there, I know it says it was unknown at the time. We have identified what it was. Was it the fact that not enough water was going through?
It's mostly water pressure issues. So we had to put some, you know, the boosters in to get it. And what it did too is it expanded the area that we were actually working on. So we had a plan for a certain size. This was allowing us to make it even bigger. So it actually worked out great both ways.
All right. Well, that was my only question. So otherwise, on that, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Move by Vice President Pizzotti, second by Trustee Wong, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I too say aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And on to approval of the 2024, 2025 Comprehensive School Site Safety Plans. Dr. Burns.
Trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, thank you for having me. Two weeks ago, we brought our CSSPs, our California, our Comprehensive School Safety Plans, before you, and today we're coming for approval for this year's. We want to reiterate a few things. These are real-time documents, constantly evolving, constantly changing. We're constantly consulting, working with our partners in the West SAC PD, the Fire Department, and we're constantly taking input. And we even have a consultant who we're working with. So we're asking for the Comprehensive School Safety Plans that we brought forward two weeks ago for approval tonight.
All right. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Are there any comments from the board?
No.
Do I have a motion?
I move.
Move by Trustee Wong.
I'll second.
Second by, I don't know.
Oh, that was me.
Oh, I was just like, you both were.
My name is trustee.
No, I was just like, I heard you both at the same time, so I was like, who's going? Clerk Kirby Gonzalez, all in favor?
Aye.
And I too say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And on to the approval of the Out-of-State National School Social Work Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, from April 10th to 12th, 2025. Autry Streak.
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Hildreth, Superintendent Dr. Hildreth, community and staff. Tonight we come before you requesting approval for two of our school social workers to attend a unique professional learning opportunity in April in Georgia. This opportunity is part of the School Social Work Association of America Annual National Conference, an opportunity for them to learn from other individuals who do the same work across the nation. And the fiscal impact is $2,100 per person, bringing the total to 8,400. And I said two social workers, but it's for four. Sorry about that. And it will be funded by the Certified Professional Learning Budget.
Thank you. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Any comments from the board?
I support this, but I also shared with Dr. Hildreth that there is a School Social Work Conference up the hill in Folsom in, yeah, in a couple of months. So I think opening up other opportunities for maybe for other folks who are interested in the school social work profession, that is a little bit less expensive.
Thank you.
So I know that that was a discussion from the board, just to make sure that we're scanning what's local first. And that's by the California School Social Worker Association.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Well, that changes everything. I was going to support this, now I'm not.
Are you? A national perspective is different because you get to see what people are doing across the nation. It's good to bring back.
All right. No other comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Move by Trustee Wong, second by Trustee Venejas, all in favor?
Aye.
And I too say aye. All right. And now on to.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Approval of the First Amendment to the Data Sharing Agreement between the City of West Sacramento and Washington Unified School District. Welcome back, Autry.
Thank you. So for this item, we are, so I've had the opportunity to collaborate with Justine Jimenez and Jeff Miller, who are from the city of West Sacramento, and they are instrumental and key to leading our Home Run program, which a lot of our students in WUSD participate in and benefit from participating in. And so there was an agreement that was approved by the board in June 2019. And it's a data sharing agreement between both parties, the city and the school district, which outlines the condition to share student information for the purpose of assessing the benefits that students who participate in Home Run versus students who do not participate in Home Run. And so the agreement was five years old and needed to be updated to reflect some metrics that are no longer relevant and to also kind of highlight the changes of the program. And so we do have a slide that we want to share to give the board, some, the board and the public some additional information about what we are requesting.
Okay.
Can you go to the first slide?
The Google. Please hold. With the first slide.
Oh, the first one, and then you guys.
Yeah. Sorry about that, Mario.
Y'all just set me up. At this time, we want to take our.
Pick in with Mario first.
I have this to share too. I'll clean up first.
So Justine can go ahead and start while Mario is projecting the slide for us. Okay.
Yes, I was going to share it one day.
Hi. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I'm delighted to be here. Washington Unified School District is the Home Run's primary partner. We created this, the Home Run, and it's six programs in partnership with you. And so we thought, as we're, we're simply bringing an amendment to an already existing data sharing agreement. So we want to let you know a little bit about why we're asking for that. And the majority of what you can, kind of, the takeaway from this is that it will make it easier on your IT department, and it'll make it easier for us to bring in more funding, hopefully, because we'll be able to do studies that are better at showing what Autry Streak was just speaking about, which is, you know, seeing how students benefit from participating in the program. So we just thought this would be a great time to bring to this board some of the highlights that have happened. We have been working with the Quality Early Learning Program, and so working with your state preschools and your special education preschools, as well as family childcare and preschools across the city of West Sacramento. And we currently have 22 sites that are certified as high-quality, and we serve more than 1,000 children annually in these quality early learning sites. So that's really exciting. That's a huge benefit and bonus for the city. And then incentives and seed deposits earned since we launched our college savings account program are 133,000. We have 258 scholarship 529 accounts. So these are not required for families to do, but we give them the information and give them, you know, talk about the benefits of that, and we do provide an incentive when they do that. And deposits from those are totaling over 1.4 million. So that's really exciting. It means that the residents of our city are working to ensure that their children have a bright future. And then we are partnering with them in depositing incentives into an account that the city actually puts money into for these children. We're doing different things like attending a board meeting, for instance, or going to a community event, or creating their resume, or getting a, you know, the parent doing research about finding a quality preschool for their child. So there's hundreds and hundreds of different incentives that they can get to get that money from the city. And another really exciting thing, and why we're really bringing this data sharing amendment to you, is because with the success of our programs, we've been able to bring more than 6.2 million in matching program grants since we launched. So this has been a really great boon. One of the things, you guys just had the presentation about the cool schools. We just received from the U.S. Department of Food and Agriculture a farm-to-early-learning grant. And it's very exciting because we're going to be able to partner with our local farms and bring fresh produce and learning about farming and planting plants and how, you know, nutrition for our youngest kids here. So we have 872 Ready, Set, Save accounts that are actively earning money. Jeff could tell you how many there are that are open, that we just need to make sure those parents start doing it, or the teens who opened them start doing that. And then our internship program, which I think all of you are really familiar with, your students from all three high schools are now able to participate in or actively participating. And we've had 284 internships since our launch. So that's just a little bit of an update on kind of where we are and where we're going. And I believe the next slide is very, very wordy, but it's just basically, again, to sort of let you know what we're doing here is we already have a data sharing agreement. We did this in 2019 when the majority of our programs were not fully launched or they had just launched. And so we didn't have, we didn't know all the things that we were necessarily going to do. So we're not asking for anything more necessarily than we were, other than just to have that information. I want to really emphasize that I know there was some concern expressed tonight about having children's private data. We are bound by all the same rules that FERPA indicates for us, as you are. And we, again, we are partners in this. And so when we get information, data, it's just to do studies, and it literally is just so we would be getting unique identifiers and just getting that information so that we can find out how the programs are benefiting students and how we can do better at getting, at reaching all the students in our city and in the school. So that's a lot of words up there. I'm not going to read it all.
Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay. Are there any comments from the board? Go ahead.
I just had a couple of questions since we had talked about it in 2019. Just a little bit of the reasoning why we were getting rid of A through G or SAT, all of that. Just kind of walk us a little bit through that. And I think for those who in the audience are watching and may not be aware what FERPA is, I know what that is, but I think it's, I know that shorthand in terms of, but I think it's important for people to understand what the FERPA kind of
I can, I can talk a little bit about it. So FERPA is a law that school districts have to comply with if they receive federal dollars. And it is basically, the tenet that applies here is that we have an obligation to protect student privacy. So like Justine mentioned, we would not, the school district would not provide the city any information that identified a student. So when we are sharing, let's say for an example, GPA or whether or not a child qualifies for free and reduced lunch, a name would not be attached to it, nor would a parent's name. A unique qualifier would be attached with that data so that program evaluation can occur. Our kids who participate in the Home Run program, excelling academically at a higher rate than students who don't participate. But to go back to the question, FERPA holds us accountable to making sure that we don't irresponsibly share student data.
So the Family Educational Rights Privacy Act? And you are using this under the Research Clause that allows us to do this?
Absolutely. Thank you.
That it has several different standards?
The Studies Clause, yes.
To make sure, yeah. Again, I think people need to understand what the FERPA is. I think saying it doesn't really provide. I see a question you have.
Fuzzy, just fuzzy, kind of. Because this is now asking, because this is different than before. It's now asking for parent guardian contact information, which didn't ask for that before. My concern is, we probably have some parents that wouldn't want to share that information automatically. So I think that's, I think that's a concern. I don't know that FERPA covers the parents.
It does. It's family-related. So all data that education, LEAs, so local education agencies, receive have to follow the federal guidelines around data management and data security. But beyond that, I think I had a follow-up question is, because it's a, you're using the Research Clause to disclose, that is a question of, help us understand how you're using parent and guardian contact information under a research, from a research lens.
Actually, we would not be disclosing that information. So when we turn over any
How are you using it is what the question was.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm not clear on the question.
The proposed amendment, actually, the last bullet point says you will be getting parent and guardian contact information.
I know, and it also says student names, but that is not information that we would include. It would be a unique identifier when we submit data to Home Run.
Okay, but the contract itself says on here that for the purpose of evaluating the effects of students and family, that we will provide, that pretty much we shall provide for each student, the name, all of these items, and the parent guardian contact information. So if we are not going to be providing the name, then I believe that this contract needs to be amended so that way it reflects the true information that we will be providing.
Yes, so the name and the, so that first bullet, President Coffey, and the last bullet would need to be omitted.
Okay, so you're just using SSIDs?
Yes.
As a match?
Yes, and as a unique qualifier, yes, ID.
State student identification number.
Okay.
Sorry, SSIDs.
Okay, so
So no disclosure of names?
Bring it back?
So can it be brought back the way that it needs to be? Because as of right now, if we approve this, it's going to be approved the way it is. It's already signed by the city, the contract. And I, not saying I don't trust, I want to be just, you know, transparent. I want to, you know, the public to know that we are, that we heard from going to be taking those, making those amendments, and then we can come back and we, I don't know, is it table?
Blessed with a clear conscience.
So I'll look at, Dr. Hill, what is the process? Because what we have in our materials actually includes name. And like, so how do we go through a process of amendment? Because what we have in front of us is not what you just told us. So how would you like us to proceed?
Bring it back with those changes, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, so this is like a first read. So take this as a first read then.
Yeah.
Right, so that's what we're saying. So we're not saying no, we're saying, hey, let's clarify on how you're using this. Because under the Research Clause, I'm like, okay, like, I'm not sure the contact information is a research, like, okay. And again, we talked about this in the two-by-two, I understand. Didn't go to the two-by-two last time, before it came in 2019? Because I was the one who
It did last time.
It did, it did last time in 2019. I think you and I, Coffee, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we did this.
But we don't have to do that. This time gets an amendment. So I know, I'm wondering if other folks, I guess I'm dying my back, is that we now just, the A through G question, because there was robust discussion about A through G requirements because it was a CalPads requirement. Is there a reason why we're not, we're shifting away from A through G, tracking that?
I think primarily it was just that we've, we're already asking for quite a bit, and I don't think we necessarily need that for our research purposes. It's, it was just kind of a judgment call in terms of not wanting to overload the district with requests for data.
Okay. Well, I mean, you do have CTE courses and pathways, dual enrollment, post-secondary plans. If, I don't know how you would get post-secondary plans from high schoolers who don't know what they want.
Which would be, which is like A through G, that's why we use A through G.
The A through G, that could probably
That's why we did A through G initially. So and again, just the thinking as to why we're no longer, we gave it to you for five years, right? So it's not overloading per se. It's, help us, help me understand from the research perspective why it was omitted.
Otherwise, it, I, once it's amended, it'll be good to go. Just, we want to, we want to not say protect our students, but we want to understand, you know, those reasonings behind that. And if we're not supposed to be giving it, let's make sure we make those amendments to the contract.
Yeah, I just had one quick question.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question. It said 827, what is it, 529 scholarship accounts opened? Yeah, Ready, Set, Save account. So over a course of five years, that's 165 per year. Two years.
Thank you for that question, yeah. So we launched Ready, Set, Save in June of 2022. That wasn't, this program is new. It's our newest program. And those are not all of the accounts that have been opened.
That's not the savings account, right?
That is the savings account, and it is not, so the savings account used to be, I think what you're remembering is, so we still have what we consider our college savings account for trying to encourage families with young children to open a college savings account, a Ready, Set, Save, a Cal Kids, you know, there's several different options now. So what you're thinking of is when we did the, if you went to a high-quality preschool and you attended a Washington Unified Kindergarten, you got $50. You now get 175 or 200, I think, dollars for doing exactly those things. And so because we now have tied it to these incentives, like a lot of different incentives, but that was, didn't launch until June of 2022.
Okay.
So that's why we're, it's less, it's not five years. So thank you for that question. That's a really good
Justine, I appreciate that. I mean, the reason why I'm a little confused is because I tried to sign up for my own personal daughter to, she didn't, she went to high-quality preschool in Sacramento, so she didn't qualify originally. But now there's other things that she would qualify for. Tried to sign up for that, and then I got kicked out for some reason in terms of trying to sign up, just wouldn't allow me to sign up. So I think a lot of people are having that issue, and that's why there's only, even in two years, 827 out of so many kids in this district that could benefit from that. And then it's also probably the advertising, like, how are we getting this out there to our families? As well as maybe an easy step-by-step instruction, you know, information.
Yeah, thank you so much for that because that was 100% what we were, like, we realized that was why we radically changed the way that it was going, because it was very difficult. We have a brand-new website that has, we've had for less than a year. And that has much more, it has video, it has video links of like step-by-step, this is exactly how you do it, this is whatever. We also are always here, our team literally will call parents and, you know, that have questions or having a problem or aren't able to get into the system for whatever reason. Unfortunately, because we are, we have to follow the guidelines of the state, we have to use a program, I'm not going to say bad things about it, but it can sometimes be a little bit clunky to try to enroll. So we, but we have our team's experts, Jeff, Damar, and Jaclyn, who will help you and make sure that you do get your child enrolled. And a lot, once that happens, then it's, we've, with this new website, it's been, become very easy to claim the activities and get the money deposited into your account. Thank you for that. That's really important.
I will say, I am you. My kid is a sixth grader now, and I have not done it because it has been so frustrating. I was just like, ah, whatever. Oh, when he gets to college, we'll deal with, we'll deal with it then, right? So knowing that there's a new system, I would have probably tried two years ago.
Get your sixth grader to do it, because our high school students are
I'm sure my sixth grader could do it now.
Yeah, our high school students are doing it, and they're amazing. So many of them have come to workshops at River City and at Washington Middle College. And I'm not sure if we've, have we had a workshop at YOLO? Yeah, we've had a couple at YOLO, and they all sign up. They're just like, sign up by the droves, and they're like, okay. So now we just have to reach out to them to say, keep doing the activities so you're getting the money, so.
Well, thank you. Any other questions?
No, just as an early childhood education leader in the state, I appreciate the quality early learning providers getting this type of service in every single setting, including with us. So I know that oftentimes our UPK rollout is, you know, clunky, but we are doing it. And appreciate the partnership with the city to provide those opportunities for early learning educators.
Thank you.
Across all settings and not just the ones in family childcare homes. So I appreciate that amendment.
Thank you so much.
I had, I first met Justine, we did the preschool commission back when we had our high-quality preschool commission that the city of West Sacramento did. And I had at the time a little toddler who's now 13. And so I know since that time, we've been working together with data to show the impacts of our high-quality preschools on our students and how, and how that sets our kids up for success. So I know that we've been, even before this agreement, there's been data sharing happening in those ways. And I'm so grateful for the work you've done with 22 High-Quality Early Learning Centers. My kids went to one of those, and it's so easy to share it to parents because it's really scary to know where to send your young child. And you've just done such a good job with that. It's really well done. We also have the 529s, and I have sitting on my desk, it was my summer job, of checking off, you know, their dentist appointment and this, that. But it was so hard on paper that I was like, oh, my printer ran out of ink, and I had to print that thing. And I, so I was one of those people too with the challenges. And so seeing this online portal now, I'm really excited about that. So I think all to say, as it looks like we're going to bring this back, I know our legal counsel though did see this too and approved it. But I think what would be great moving forward at some time this year is to have maybe an update from you all of what you're doing with our kids and the programs that we can share out, because we have our school liaisons. We have our parent coffees that principals do, all of these really good ways to share information and help people sign up. We can help you lift that. And I know that there's been partnerships of that, but I think we could do even more. And especially now that a 529, you know, if you sign up for a 529 when your child's much older, there's not really time for it to get a lot of money and interest when it's invested. However, now your 529, if they're not all used, can also be rolled into a Roth IRA, which was not true in the past. So and then when they retire, it's a long-distance goal, but it's just really exciting to see what that can do. So I appreciate all that. Thank you. And I think my ask is, if we bring this back, which it sounds like we're going to, that we just add you to the, you know, first action item because I know that you've stayed late tonight. Thank you so much.
It's 8:15.
That's true. It does get much later here.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Thank you. But it's really hot tonight, so it seems later.
I'm going to go back to A through G. Am I the only one who thinks that we should still through?
So that was just going to clarify that what I've heard the request to come back with was a strikeout for the name, the parent guardian contact information, clarification on post-secondary plans, how we might get that, even though it says post-secondary enrollment information if known. But then to connect that with a question regarding A to G. And another request I heard was to confirm if there is an opt-out clause for parents.
Yeah. But it's not about clarification. Nobody else on the board cares about, really, I want to capture A through G because that's an indicator of college growing, like
It's not that nobody on this board cares about kids
Oh, no, no, I'm asking to be
G data. It's about what your researchers want.
Well, my wondering is that if we're working together, A through G Wondering is that if we're working together, A through G, in most research spheres, they, they use as, as an indicator.
Okay.
Right.
I think that's why it was in the original.
Correct.
Yeah. So we want to, so we want to keep the A through G. Do you want to keep all of the A through Gs that were struck, striked out? Or are you just recommending just putting A through G?
If you, A through G broadly would probably cover all of it. So.
Sorry.
Well, we're not the ones doing the research, so probably we should ask the people.
The, the question I had was regarding.
Was we didn't want to ask.
Is there currently an opt-out provision in this?
No.
No. Okay. Can we include one?
Should we do an opt-out or opt-in?
So. Not opt-in because it, we're automatically saying you're, we're giving you this information. Parents that really don't want to participate could have the ability to say, eh, I'm not comfortable.
So you're talking about the parents who don't have, their children are not involved in the home run and they don't want to have their children.
They don't want to be the control group.
Study. They don't want to be the control group. Do you have other? Things that you're doing in the district, like in terms of?
I don't know.
I'm just wondering, like, because aren't there things that you need to prove in terms of like Title I eligibility and things? So I don't know what that would mean exactly. If we're not getting in unique, if we're just using unique identifiers and not getting
It would have to be on R and A. We would not transfer that data. It actually, it's incumbent on the district for an opt-out, then we would not transfer the data for those, those parents who opt out.
Yeah, because we can't, we can't ask it, parents to opt out.
It's not on you. It's on, we provide you the data. So if a parent opt out, opts out and you, you're okay with the control group opting out, then we don't give you that information because we'll just code it accordingly. We'll just omit it.
Okay.
Cause it's, it's incumbent on us to not give the data.
I currently know that there are parents out there that are not comfortable with having us having information.
So that won't be part of the contract?
Right.
Or will it need to be that there, there may be some parents who will opt out and we will not include that?
I think that the city has to agree that that's okay in the control group, that there will be some parents opting out.
Well, I guess I'm, my question is, if there's no personally identifiable information attached, why, why do they need to opt out?
Well, you will have some personal identifier because you'll have the date of birth and you'll have the address. So that information is personally identified and as a parent, they don't, you go to the address, you kind of know, I, I, I can just see that there will be some people.
There's just people that don't want, I guarantee.
Right. I, I think just adding this, being able to come back allows us to determine what the opt-out process will be so that when we ask the team to return, we will be able to explain that. So our parents and community members will know that it's there, will bring it back, um, along with post-secondary plans, meaning, um, the importance of our A to G focus for students and their post-secondary plans. So this information allows us to know and have the time to come back with the information needed.
Okay. So on that, do we, is this tabled or this is not tabled?
Well, it was action. So I think that I, the new motion to table, to table.
Motion to table and then bring back when you.
We had discussions.
And bring back.
I would say to, uh, motion to table and to bring back when we, um, when the team has the updated information.
Okay. So do I have, uh?
I don't think, I have a motion to table and bring back with the proposed amendments.
All right. So trustee Wong, uh, motions, trustee Vanegas moves, all in favor. All, seconds, sorry, sorry, seconds, not motion, second. Okay, there we go. Now, all in favor.
Aye.
I too say aye. Kobe's not here, but I'm sure he, I won't speak for him. So.
He'll be back in a second.
He'll be right back.
All right.
Are you okay with tabling? There we go. All, all in favor. And I too say aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto P eight. Approval of the non-public schools NPS student contracts at Sierra School of Sacramento for the 2024-2025 school year. Welcome back, Autry.
I'm joined tonight by Director Carla Salvo, who will bring this item before you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Hildreth and Cabinet. Um, so we are seeking your approval for the renewal of like four NPS contracts, but I'll break down each one of them. So the first one is for Sierra School of Sacramento. Um, it is, uh, like I mentioned, a renewal for five of our students to continue to, uh, receive their offer of FAP or Free and Appropriate Public Education, um, as this is what's been outlined in their IEP.
All right. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Are there any comments from the board?
That, um, what you said, that there, this is a renewal, they've already been attending these schools. Um, this is not a new placement.
All right. And, and this is also for us to be in compliance with IDA, the federal law. Otherwise, we'd be out of compliance. With that, if there aren't any question, I, I move when ready.
I'll make a second. Okay. I was going to say, I heard trustee Vanegas, but he moved. Okay, there you go. I'll say, so trustee Vanegas moved and who would like to second? I second. Okay. Second by trustee Wong, all in favor.
Aye.
And I too say aye. And we're going on to the next one. Approval for the non-public school student contracts at Capital Elementary for the 2024-2025 school year. Welcome back.
Thank you. So same, Grashnell, seeking your approval for the renewal of the contract with Capital Elementary. Uh, this is for three students that are currently, um, being placed at the non-public school. And these are the same three. All right. There's one that's a new. These are the same three students from last year.
Okay. Are there any public comments?
There are no public comments, but Carla, if you can, or I'm sorry, Director Salvo, if you can speak a little closer to the microphone, just for the record and audio portion of this meeting.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Questions? Go for it.
Oh, my Ellen. There we go. Okay. Um, so all of these are to different schools. Why? I mean, why, why are they not, what, why? I mean, they're all medically fragile.
Different, different.
Or different needs. Is that what it is?
All of our non-public schools have certain niches of support that they provide for students.
Okay.
Um, so for example, um, for Capital Elementary, theirs is more for students who, um, uh, need mental health supports, um, who have just higher rates of behavior that just need that support where versus Sierra, um, they have kind of the gamut of the whole spectrum. So there is medically fragile, there's autism classrooms, there's, um, emotional disability classroom. So it just kind of depends on the needs of each individual student and why we place them at those NPSs and/or the space that the NPS has.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Same reason, federal compliance?
Correct.
I move when ready.
Second.
Trustee Wong, uh, moves. Uh, Vice President Pizzotti, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I too say aye. And approval of the non-public school student contracts at Point West Education for the 2024-2025 school year. Welcome back.
So, um, again, renewal of a contract for Point Quest Education. This will support the, um, IEP placement for two students. So we meet our IDEA requirements. Um, and these are the same two students as last.
All right. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Are there any additional public comments? All right. Do I have a motion?
My second.
Moved by, uh, Vice President Pizzotti, second by trustee Vanegas. All in favor?
Aye.
I too say aye. Okay. Approval of the renewal of the contract with NorCal School of the Arts for the 2024-2025 academic year.
Capital Academy?
No, no.
Oh, wait, you have Capital Academy.
One more, we got eleven.
Number eleven.
Oh, I'm on eleven. I skipped ten. Sorry.
Director Salvo, you have to come back. You have one more.
I accidentally marked the wrong one that I said I did and I didn't do. So I apologize. It's hot. I forgot.
Psych.
I thought I had one more, but I thought maybe not.
No, you do. You have one more. Approval of the non-public schools. Wait, that was eleven?
So there's two capitals, one's Capital Elementary and the other one's Capital Academy.
Okay. I was, I thought my brain was not playing tricks on me. Okay. So eleven, approval of the non-public school student contract at Capital Academy for the 2024-25 school year. Okay.
And so Capital Academy is high school age students and that's why there's two different, items. But same, uh, this is for one student to attend non-public, um, school for the purposes of the Individual Education Plan. So we can meet our IDEA or Individuals with Disabilities Education Act obligations.
Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Trustee Vanegas moves.
Second.
Vice President Pizzotti, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
And I too say aye. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, come on.
Okay. Now approval of the renewal of the contracts with NorCal School of the Arts for the 2024-2025 academic year.
Wonderful. Good evening. Uh, we are here seeking recommendation for a renewal of the contract with NorCal School of the Arts. We have a longstanding relationship with them. Um, this is for them to be able to do SCL, trauma-informed and theater in the classrooms. Um, it's a 20-week program and right now this, this contract is to cover up to 55 classrooms using their Proposition, uh, Proposition 28 funds that they have in excess after, um, their hirings. And so this is to cover 55 classrooms and we currently have 30 that have signed up with interest so far.
All right. Are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Any comments from the board?
No, we love, we love the arts. They, they presented last time, right? They spoke in public comment.
The director was here, yeah.
Prop 28, is that the music?
The summer program.
Okay.
Yeah. All, all the kids in summer program.
No, it's the arts and mu, it's not summer program.
It's not NorCal? No, I know, but.
NorCal, yeah, the, the direct, yeah, yeah.
It's same company.
Yes.
Yes. Same company.
All right.
I move when ready.
Second.
My only question, sorry.
You can, go ahead.
Um, is, uh, you said that not all the schools had signed up, but we're going to ensure that every slot is full.
Correct. I believe that all schools have at least a few teachers who signed up. It was more who was interested in how much, um, extra Proposition 28 funds that they had. But yes, we're encouraging as many as they can.
Five classrooms?
We do not, we have, yeah. This is to cover up to 55 classroom in this contract, but we currently have 30 different teachers that are interested in signing up.
Up to 55 classrooms, but you currently only have 30?
Signed up, okay. Yeah. But we anticipate more.
Who would not sign up for this?
Yes. It's a once-a-week program. It's amazing. And you'll see in the, um, in the additional addendums that we put on the item, all the different teacher feedback and whatnot. It's really incredible program.
Okay. It could just be that they feel that they might not have any time, you know? I mean, I'm just saying, like, you know, like, like, well, maybe I don't really, if they know how beneficial it'd be, maybe.
I think once they see their fellow teachers and the different things happening.
Yeah, I think that will, will probably happen.
And Rosie is doing a wonderful job of outreach, reaching out to all the different teachers, saying, would you like to?
Okay. Awesome. And I heard Vanegas, was it? I was like, I think, yes. I was like trustee Vanegas moved, uh, trustee Wong, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I too say aye. Okay.
Thank you.
And now on to board governance. Um, second read of the revisions to board policy number 5131.8, mobile communication devices. Autry streak.
Good evening. Dr. Burns will, um, take the lead on this item and, um, I'll be here too to answer any questions.
All right, trustees, thank you for having me back up. Superintendent Hildreth, Dr. Hildreth, thank you. All right. So we did the first read a few weeks ago. We came back with a second read. You even asked us to bring you up a sample or a draft of administrative regulation. So before we go through the read, can we pull up the administrative regulation sample and just show them real quick? Cause, yeah, I want to just take them through the draft. Uh, and I want you guys, you don't have it in front of you, so I want you to be able to see it. Can you see it on your computers? You're good to go. Let you guys look at it. And this is just a sample draft.
And the AR will come back to the policy. Not, not that necessarily has to be adopted here.
Yes. It doesn't, it doesn't come back to the board, but it's, so the question was at our last, just wanted to see a sample of what a possible administrative regulation might look like, a draft prior to looking at the board policy that needs to be approved by the school board.
Can I suggest that coming back to policy? I mean, it doesn't have to come back to this board, but for us to review.
Are you talking about the AR?
The AR, the AR, the AR, not the BP, not the board policy that, that's on.
But tonight we're doing.
The board policy.
Okay.
I'm just still reading. I'm, I'm a slow reader.
I am too. I got a whole section that was, it's okay. If it's going to go back to policy, then.
Yeah, it's, you're on policy. So, yeah.
This is not even working. Not enough.
Oh, yeah, I don't. When it goes to policy committee, I would not, I would not include the instructor shall deliver the mobile communication device to the front office.
At their earliest convenience, yes.
Well, we'll look more in depth.
I'm sure, I'm sure that your staff will be loud and clear maybe about that. So.
Right. We're going to ask, we'll ask for input and look into it. I just know that the ask was that we bring something back.
Thank you. And we appreciate that.
It's helpful, listening.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. And now I want to take you to the board policy, the second read. And do you have it to share up? I, they have it in front of them too. Thank you.
I can bring it up.
Thank you.
Second read, it'll be, the red will be the top paragraph when it pops up. And it says, it reads now, the governing board recognizes that using smartphones and other mobile communication devices is disruptive to the school environment. This new policy aims to improve student safety and reduce cyberbullying, minimize distractions on the school campus and lessen the negative side, negative effects mobile devices can have on the school community. And we have it up here. And that was the key, that was the ask, that we look at that first paragraph and make changes to it. And then we'll talk about the other changes that were requested.
So just to be clear, um, non-instructional for the nine twelve means passing period, correct? You can use it during.
Passing period is not considered to be non-instructional time.
It is.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't clarify that correctly. Passing period, passing period is instructional time. You said it correctly the first time. I said it wrong.
Students may use mobile communication devices on campus during non-instructional time. So effectively, that's passing periods instructional time.
Correct.
So they can't use it at all.
During passing period, correct.
Okay. So how is that different than the TK eight?
They can use it during lunch.
Oh, because they.
Not at all.
And their breaks, yeah.
Right. So if we look at the.
Instructional time breaks, yeah.
Thank you. So if you look at the changes that we were asked on the, on the next read, right, the third, shall be silenced and out of sight during instructional time. Now, here's the key. Students TK through eight may use mobile communication devices on campus before the first bell and after the last bell, as long as the device is utilized in accordance with the student use of technology. Use in areas of privacy, here was another key part.
Right.
Student areas, student use in areas of privacy, such as bathrooms and locker rooms is prohibited at all times. Right? Now here's the difference, the nine twelve. Students nine twelve may use mobile communication devices on campus during non-instructional time, as long as the device is utilized in accordance with the student's use of technology. And once again, the caveat, use in areas of privacy, such as bathrooms and locker rooms is prohibited at all times.
Yeah. And it's block scheduling. So there, they have non, they other have blocks of non-instructional time too.
Yeah. And it's block scheduling, so they're, they have non, they other have blocks of non-instructional time too?
So then that would mean if a student is viewed, uh, or caught, I guess, utilizing their phone during passing period, it can be confiscated?
It could be, yes, yes.
Not that I have a problem with it, I'm just saying.
Understood.
I'm sure there's going to be some students that have a problem with it, but I'm not, not here to have problems with it.
I mean, it is the new law.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask, when we think, um, in terms of starting to, to communicate this? I know many schools already have put their own policies in place and they're kind of taking the heat themselves, you know, versus move the heat up here, you know, to take it off of them. But, um, how, when do we think that this would now roll out to families? I know you need to work on, uh, the AR. And so what do we think in terms of what timeline is reasonable to start communicating that? Should we start communicating that there's a board policy and staff is working on AR? What are you, what do we think on that? Or you think on that?
And how to engage the students who say, we're fine with it, but explain to us the why.
Correct. So the thought process is that we're going to sit down with Mr. Kazanis, right? We've sat, sat down and started talking about, what does it look like? What does our campaign look like to educate our community and our parents? And this can take a little time and we're also going to want to work with our administrators. So part of the administrative regulation is also going to be going, working with our administrators and saying, what does this look like for us? And then here's the next part, how do we communicate this to our students and community? Like you said, what is the why as we're moving forward and how we're going to support it? And this is going to have to be a transition period, right? Not going to happen overnight. We're not going to have perfection, but we're going to grow our kids, educate them in our community.
So the goal is to, um, complete the AR before we start our communication and, um, implementation with the schools, with the district community. And so I'm thinking towards the end of the semester, the first semester, we should be ready to fully implement in January. That's our goal.
And then, um, can I ask, so I assume then within that timeline, you either have a policy committee or you would, if there's not a meeting ready, you would do one just for this. Okay.
We will. Yes.
Okay.
I move if everybody's, uh, on the board policy, not the AR, but the board policy, whenever people are ready.
Second.
All right. Trustee Wong moves. Vice President Pizzotti seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I too say aye. And second read of the new Washington Unified School District Board Policy Number 051, nope, 0415 on equity. No, I was saying the numbers were, I, I switch them sometimes, I'm sorry. I was trying so hard not to do that. Okay.
So good evening again. Our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Director, Dr. Lauren Mascareñas, will lead us in the second read of our new draft equity policy.
Thank you. So this has been a long time labor, labor of love. We're here for our second read. There was a few corrections last time at the, um, board meeting that were included. I think that was in the, um, spelling out of some of those student groups and some, um, there was a glossary that was added that, um, has also just all the little tiny pieces picked up. But this is a long time labor and love and looking for a second read so that we can, um, have our equity policy.
All right, are there any public comments?
No public comments.
Are there any comments from the board? More questions? Yes.
I just want to highlight and thank Dr. Mascareñas for all of your work, um, on this policy. This has been something that the board, um, has asked for, for a while now. When the board, um, we were doing the strategic plan and adopted the equity principles that are at the beginning of the strategic plan, the next step was the equity policy. And so just getting this done, bringing it to the subcommittee, using the CSBA equity policy kind of as a foundation, but the feedback that we received was, we really want this to be a policy that lives in our schools, not just lives on the wall or in a binder. And so it was really important for us to not only think about it from our adult lens, but to think about it from the student lens, because we want our students to be seen, heard, valued and respected. And the equity policy is one way that we're able to show the support of the board of what kind of district Washington Unified is. What do we value here? We value all of our kids, all of our families, and this is just one way that we're able to show. So our plan, working with, um, June Flores and all of our wonderful student leadership advisors, is to begin to, uh, once it is hopefully approved, uh, to begin to roll it out intentionally. To begin to talk about this at, ask our administrators and share this with them so that they have, um, they can then bring this to their staff meetings and make sure that all of our staff, um, certificated and classified staff are aware that we have this new policy. We're asking that they share this at their coffee with the principal meetings. This is one of the things that I will be highlighting as I'm meeting with our chamber partners and I give updates. When we go to the rotary, we give updates about what does it mean to work in Washington Unified? Who do we support? We support all of our students. And so I just want to thank you for getting us to the end where we can finally take this policy and actually put it into practice. So thank you so much for your work on so many things, but this is just extra special. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, yes? You may ask a question.
Okay, so I'm looking at some of the bullets on this. And students who are neurodivergent or have a mental, physical or learning disability. So I'm at, I'm kind of going kind of deep into the rabbit hole here. Where would somebody who has either like diabetes fall? Would that be physical disability? Or epilepsy? Would that be mental disability?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That was, that was a bullet that was, um, included after feedback from our high school students.
As a diabetic and epileptic, that's why I was wondering.
Yeah, they wanted to make sure the physical, the neurodivergent, all of that was in there. Yes, so.
I'll make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Clerk, uh, Kirby Gonzalez, second by Vice President Pizzotti. All in favor?
Aye.
And I too say aye.
Thank you, thank you.
And now on to our board superintendent comments, starting with Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, President Coffey. Good evening, trustees and community. Um, as we move into October, I want to highlight some observances and events. We're proud, the district is proud to recognize that this is National Bullying Prevention Month. Our schools are implementing various initiatives to promote kindness and inclusion. And even though this is a highlight of this month, we know that this is something that we're going to be focused on throughout the entire year, not just talking about bullying as if it only happens in the month of October. So, but we do want to highlight the added awareness to this, um, concern that many, um, have expressed. Um, October is also Filipino-American History Month, a time to reflect on and celebrate the rich contributions of Filipino-Americans to our community and to our nation. Just this past week, on October 2nd, it was School Custodian Appreciation Day. And we are honored by the hard-working custodians in the district who have the great job of keeping our learning environments clean and safe all year long. So we appreciate that work on behalf of everyone at our school sites and in our district office. National School Lunch Week is coming up. It's from October 14th through the 18th. And we extend our appreciation to our nutrition staff, food services staff, who provide healthy meals to our students daily. The week of the school administrator is October 13th through 19th. So remember to recognize our dedicated administrators for their leadership and their support. After that week, we will have National School Bus Safety Week, which runs from October 21st through the 25th. So I want to make sure we thank our transportation team for safely transporting our students day in and day out. And then we'll be celebrating Red Ribbon Week from October 23rd through the 31st, which promotes drug prevention awareness. So please check in with, uh, your schools for specific activities that are being planned. We acknowledge the important religious observances this month, including Rosh Hashanah at the start of the month and Yom Kippur beginning on October 11th. On October 14th is Indigenous Peoples' Day, which honors the history and cultures of Native Americans. Also, October 14th is a No School Day for all of our schools, except for Washington Middle College High School, because they, they follow the community college instructional calendar. So a lot of great things happening in October besides my birthday, just.
We'll throw that in there.
For school sites, I, I, I think it's the best part of what I've been doing, uh, more intentionally this year is trying to get out to schools at least once a week. It's, uh, my source of joy. I had the pleasure of visiting Elkhorn and Stone Gate, where I get to talk with, uh, school leaders and really just have a deep dive of what's going on. I always start with tell me a win, because everyone, the first thing you think about is what's not going well. And it always makes people go, hmm, let me think about that. And then once they start thinking about it, it just comes out all the good that is happening. So it allows everyone who's working so hard to recognize and celebrate small chunks, small wins. Just a little thing is something that we want to acknowledge. So I'm, I'm very intentional in making sure we know what support is needed, but that we take time to acknowledge all the work that people are doing that doesn't get celebrated. It reaffirms what's happening good in our district, in our classrooms. Um, I get to stop and stopping by cafeterias. I talk to the, uh, campus aides and noon duties and just say, what is happening on the yard? Like, what are some, do we need extra hula hoops? Like, what's, what do, what do we need for our, our students? And just, you know, do you all have water? It's been hot. So just really making sure that everybody is valued and that their input is something that we're always seeking. I want to thank our, our admin team, because just like our teachers who are focused on PLCs, professional learning commi-, uh, communities, or our staff. Our admin team also is, uh, continuing our partnership with the National Center for Urban School Transformation, known as NCUST. And this partnership provides our education, educators and our leaders with professional development. And it allows our admin time to get together and talk about best practices and what's working and visiting each other's schools and classrooms. And so this week, uh, with NCUST, the teams were at, uh, Southport and Westfield Village and were able to do some deep dives and really focus on something that the principal wanted to get feedback on. This is our plan. Let's go and visit some classrooms and then what did you see that says, yes, I see what you're doing? Or here's some ideas. And they're very reflective and we continue to get good feedback from that. So thank you, Assistant Superintendent Streak for continuing to lead that work. We also had, uh, from our wonderful HR team, our first Leadership Series Workshop. And, um, it was from our Assistant Superintendent of HR, Shay Borges, and her team, which presented the session, what does HR do? What do they do though? So it was open to any staff member interested in leadership roles, management, or just what does it mean? What, what do we do in the different departments in WUSD? So we were excited to see nearly 45, uh, individuals inten-, attended. And they were eager to learn the inner workings of how our HR team sets us up for success. And so we're looking forward for, uh, the next, uh, Leadership Series. And then lastly, I want to highlight, um, and thank everyone for Successful Certificated Professional Learning Day, which was on the 27th, on that Friday. We had approximately 80% of the district certificated staff who attended. The content was differentiated to meet the diverse needs of our educators. Presenters for the KI, the K8 sessions included site administrators, instructional coaches and our directors. And the goal of these sessions was to use the first eye-ready diagnostics to guide instructional decisions within our site-based grade-level teams. Each presenter was selected based on their expertise and professional development experience, including those who participated in the Unbound Ed Conference. Conferences held this year and last year where we sent teams to, so they came back and are using that learning to lead their peers. And by incorporating key components of the Unbound Ed Glean Framework, we are able to work on ensuring that there is grade level alignment with a focus on standards mastery. And our presenters helped our teachers to understand the importance of delivering high-quality first instruction and making sure that all of our students are getting the standards of the grade level. And we provide additional supports, scaffolds, accommodations, modifications for those who are not on grade level without lowering the standards. That's really important to making sure our students are getting the grade level, um, information that is required by the state. Our teams were working behind the scenes to support our students and community with these training sessions. So wanted to share just some of the feedback. Um, about 233 teachers provided feedback. 80% or higher scored a three or a four in each category on the evaluation. Common themes of collaboration were that they appreciated the time for collaboration and planning, that they received practical strategies and that the content was relevant and engaging. A couple of quotes, um, where people, you know, they, it's meaningful if they give you additional open-ended, um, feedback. So the professional learning sessions were engaging and provided useful content that I can apply in my classroom. Or great planning session. It helped us identify key areas for targeted interventions and how to structure our lessons more effectively. So that's the goal of making sure whatever we do when we're asking parents not to send your children to school, that is a sacrifice and we appreciate our parents', uh, willingness to, to do that and make the arrangements, because our teachers do benefit from having that time to collaborate. And with that, I'll end. Thank you so much.
And thank you. So many good things. And how about you, Trustee Vanegas?
All right. I'll keep mine short because I know it's hot. Um, yeah, no, thank you to everybody. I know I've had the opportunity to just, uh, work, uh, again, across the state and, and the buzz in Yolo County and the buzz in West Sacramento continues to, uh, be a positive one. So thank you to leadership. Thank you to the, the staff and the parents in the community. And yes, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wong?
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, I love starting with a student board member. That's just so, we should do more of that. Right, kind of all the feel-good stuff tonight. So again, looking forward to seeing our students at the CSBA Conference in Anaheim. As we know, homecoming, was it just last week? It was just last week. So had the opportunity to see the flag, girls' flag football, uh, homecoming. And they're, they're awesome. They're, they're pretty phenomenal young women. And the coaches are fabulous, have been in this community for such a long time. There are also our campus aides, by the way, um, who know our students and our families who've grown up with these students. So, uh, it was really, really fun to be in the crowd with the teachers, the parents cheering, cheering the girls' flag football team on. And they, they kicked butt, like, oh, sorry, was I supposed to say that on camera? But, uh, like they, against Pioneer. And homecoming is always fun, always a good crowd, a lot of good energy. And so grateful for all who, um, sacrificed to put that week together. Cause I know a lot of families, uh, look forward to that, that, and a lot of alumni come back and it's always good to see how grown everybody is. Really grateful on that same night, I was doing double duty. I had the opportunity to go to the Yolo Food Bank Global Rice- I had the opportunity to go to the Yolo Food Bank Global Rice Fest. As we know, we have a strong partnership with the Yolo Food Banks, who help feed our families and address food insecurity. So grateful for us deepening our relationship with the Yolo Food Banks. And the last thing, I'll bring it back again, future board agenda items. So really, just a policy question, maybe I can just ask right now. I already talked to Dr. Hildreth about it, but really just examining, is there a real opportunity for water sports to be exempted from hot days? So I know that we all received a message from one of our coaches, but really wanting to examine that in policy alongside the AR with the mobile. So sooner rather than later would be awesome.
Yes, we'll be bringing that to the Policy Subcommittee for discussion.
Perfect. Thank you. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Clerk Kirby Gonzalez?
Thank you. Yes, great celebrations in Homecoming. The energy, if you ever want to feel good, West Sac energy, there's nothing like being in that stadium when it's just packed. It's such a great place to be. And I want to give a shout out to President Coffey for, we did YCOE Excellence in Education Awards, and she rocked it, reading all of our incredible people in this district that we were honoring. And you did a great job honoring them all. So it was a great celebration. And I wanted to bring up our Prop 28. It came up a little bit earlier. But I've seen some of our VAPA teachers who work so hard. I don't need to tell anybody in this room how hard a band director or others work. They work so hard. And I have seen maybe some exhaustion that I hadn't seen before in some of their faces when I'm talking to some of our folks in the VAPA world. And one of the requests that was made is, well, what's happening with our Prop 28 money? Because how can we utilize it to help with bringing on some instructors? We can hire some people to help with this or that to really make us, you know, stand out in the region. So I'm proposing that with our staff, just as we look at our Prop 28 funding. That's at arts funding, and that we really talk to our teachers in those departments about what they need to see and what would help them. For example, you'll get a lot of ideas if you just speak to them. But I heard about like a piano accompanist for choir that gets hired. And apparently, many districts do that, where they hire a pianist to help with the choir, and it can kind of take them to that next level. So we have great people here working. I know we have great people in HR and our curriculum departments doing things all over. But just to know that that maybe is a spot that we can do more engagement with our teachers. Another piece would be, we've had a lot of hotspots in terms of a lot of safety things going on in our campuses, and staff has been working so, so hard. And so I just want to thank our administrators, our classified staff, our teachers, and our families, who have all really helped with those pieces. We get the updates from schools, we all families do. And so you see what's happening. And I want to thank all of those who are working so hard to keep our kids and our staff safe. And then the last piece for me is I wanted to recognize Robert Anzel. And you might not know that name, but he knew us really well, because he was the technician that did all the videotaping of our meetings. And people live stream our meetings, of course. We have people on YouTube watching them. And we learned after our last meeting that he had passed away. And I really want to acknowledge the work that people do who are not always seen, because he was right over there in that room, but who do so much that's just critically important for the work that we do and for making sure transparency is a big part of this board and knowing that our board meetings and the work that's happening and the actions are making it out into our community. It's just what a gift to have had him as our partner doing that all these years. And I wanted to acknowledge that loss and let his family and all of his colleagues here at the city know that we appreciate him and that we are sorry.
And we can do a moment of silence. So let's go ahead and have a moment of silence. Thank you. Vice President Pizzotti?
Yeah, okay. So it was brought up by one of our community members, talking about the need for an athletic trainer. I could not agree more. I've spoken to probably five coaches. And what, we have a contract to provide ambulatory services at our football games, but we don't have an athletic trainer to provide injury relief if somebody sprains an ankle or tears a tendon or, you know. And what we have to do is we actually have to utilize the visiting team's athletic trainer. I mean, in my nine years on the board, we've never had an athletic trainer. And that kind of, I feel bad about that, for as much as I care about athletics. I didn't know, and as I'm, you know, have one foot out the door, I feel bad that I didn't catch this. And so I want to make sure that this is on everybody's radar, and it's something that we need to look at. You know, football, wrestling, basketball, even, you know, sports like volleyball, cheer, especially cheer.
All of them.
Badminton, tennis even, right, things where you can do a lot of, you know, caring of things. It would be very beneficial for us to have either a contract or a full-time position, or we can provide, you know, our students with some sort of supportive service. I even talked to Coach Long about an athletic trainer position, and he said that he even has a doctor who's willing to volunteer his time if we have an athletic trainer for him to do it under. So just wanted to put that out there. So something to chew on a little bit for the future. Probably not going to come while I'm around, but I may be up there making a stink about it later on down the road.
Please don't.
I wanted to talk about some of the school safety issues as well. We've been seeing a serious increase in incidents happening on our school campuses, ranging from like suspicious individuals asking kids to get into a car. That makes me sick inside, right? And threats to schools, weapons being brought to campuses, individual adults walking onto campuses stating, I need help. I'm going to hurt myself or somebody else. That's, you know, the number of calls we've made to West Sac PD in two months, August, or October, yeah. In two months has been more than I've seen in nine years on the board. And I think that's something we need to take notice of. Things are not getting any better. You know, there's crazy times ahead of us, and I know everybody's on edge. But we have to be very cautious about what's happening, you know, in our community and within, you know, our region. And I'm glad we did pass our school site safety plans. But, you know, there's a lot of things that happen that we can't account for. So I just wanted to bring awareness to some of the things that are happening. And then finally, I wanted to talk, and because my daughter has railed on and on and on about iReady. And since she's already started to protest and gathered signatures and all that, I would be remiss if I didn't, you know, do this for her. So using iReady to do end-of-the-year assessments might work for some kids, but it sure doesn't work for all kids. And I can say this because my daughter, who has ADHD, will take longer than normal to do an assessment at the end of the year, because her head is, you know, looking squirrel or whatever, right? She's flighty at times. And what she ends up doing, like many, many, many other kids, is she starts hitting a single button and just wants to get it done so she can get out and go play with her friends or get home or do whatever. Well, what ended up happening this year is because in English Language Arts, where she was getting a B+ last year, she ended up not having a lot of time to finish her iReady at the end of last year. And she got put into English Lab. Well, her math grade was struggle last year. Kicking and screaming, we had to pull her into, you know, help and have her in math lab. But because iReady said she did better in math at the end of the year last year, she got put into English Lab when she needed to be into math lab. So I'm just saying, as we look at, as we look at how we use iReady as a standardized, you know, sort of assessment tool, it might not be the best for some kids. Maybe we can find other ways for kids that are neurodivergent or have learning disabilities to, you know, provide some extra sort of help in finding out where they need their help. Because a standardized test may not be the best way to do it. So just throwing it out there, my two cents. And that's it.
Well, thank you very much. I agree, what we should look into, athletic trainer, what does it take? What do we need to do? And how much is that going to cost us if we can? And of course, just looking into it, it's just, it seems, it'd be nice to be like, yeah, our high school has an athletic trainer. I don't know, it just sounds cool. Dr. Hildreth.
We will, we will share some information. I know that has been a conversation at the high school, so we're gathering on some information that we can share in an executive summary.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, the YCOE Excellence in Education, that was fun. I'm not going to lie, although I was nervous up there. I know y'all can't tell half the time, but we definitely, I was like, we need to do better at making sure that our peoples, they show up. It's okay. We got one. We had one show up. Oh, man, I made it happen. I was like, nobody's here. You saw it? Oh, my gosh. Okay, so we had one. Ms. Holly.
We have Holly, though.
We do. Holly makes us jolly. And so I'm really excited about our student leaders. I can't wait to see them at CSBA. Let's make something happen while they're there for the two days. Dinner or something before they take, this is a work venue. You know, we can do, we'll figure out something. We'll make it happen. Because I think helping them, so they're not nervous when they're up here, get them familiarized with, you know, we are individuals. Yes, we sit here, but we are people. And they're people too, and we want them to feel comfortable and sticking around, even if it's just for, through all of the reports. And that's, you know, baby steps, baby steps. But I'm excited. This is going to be a great group. I don't know what it is. I just feel it. Yes. So many good things are just happening throughout the district. Projects are becoming complete. I saw, you know, we saw that the Yolo Handball Wall is up. You asked me about, you know, do they do a ribbon cutting? They don't plan to do that until at the end of the year, you know, to focus and get things taken care of. But there are things that are, you know, things are happening, shaking and moving. Glad to hear, you know, one of our community members say, you know, this is typical with the shade structure. I'm cool with that. I mean, isn't shade structure, you know, it's not cool because we don't have one. Okay, it's bad mom jokes, but anyway, I'm like, right? It's just one of those things, like, I just want them to be able to play on the grounds and just get their jitters out. And can't wait to have some swings over at Riverbank when it does happen. So one other thing that, this is just something that I came across and I wanted to share it. It is still Hispanic Heritage Month, at least for like a few more days. If you did not know, there is a series on the public broadcasting station, also known as PBS. And it's called Voces, which means voices in Spanish, American Historia, The Untold Story of Latinos. And it's been, and it's actually John Leguizamo. He started it. I highly recommend you, as a parent, watch it first before you show your children to make sure that you are okay with them learning this history, because it really is the untold story. It starts off with, long before, with the Mayans, with the Incans, with everything that happened, with those that were pre, I want to say Spaniards coming in and everybody else. So definitely, yeah. So it's really amazing. And then there's already two episodes, and they release them on Friday. So I'm actually looking forward to the next one. And it really is stuff that you do not see in our textbooks. So just be ready to learn something that you're like, what? That's all I got to say. And on that note, I have nothing more, because I was super excited, and I had my kids sit down and watch it with me. And they were like, that right there, that, that, that right there, Mom. I said, I know, right? I'm going to leave you guys all in suspense. You're like, what? You're going to see it, and you'd be like, oh, that's, that, that right there is money. Okay.
President Coffey, I have one more thing that I forgot to mention, if I can. I want to take the time to say thank you to Dr. Mascareñas. We, the agenda was approved, and we know that you are leaving us. But I just want to say thank you for all the work. We have community schools because you helped to write that grant. And you came in at a time where we were just learning and trying to understand what community schools could bring to our district. And we now have $6.7 million of a grant, federal, which we're only one of four districts in the state who have that federal grant. And then for our schools that have the state grant, and it's been a heavy lift. And so thank you so much for all of your work. And you laid the foundation for June and Jay to really take on and support that community schools, which allowed you then to refocus your efforts on what the board approved in that Director of Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, and all the needs that we see that our students have. You brought in Freedom Schools, which was such a joy. You got the NTSS policy. You have the equity policy. You brought in Projects and COFA for our African-American female students who were experiencing a lot of challenges. You shared information with our staff on different holidays and just thinking about Ramadan and what that means, and letting our staff understand what that means. And for students who might be experiencing school different during that time period and sharing the why and supporting Dia de los Muertos last year and supporting our first annual Kwanzaa event. So as I said in my comments, when we talk about what are the small wins, a lot of times, we don't take the time to think about what's the good, because we all focus on, oh, I should have done this. I should have done that. But before you leave, I just want to say thank you on behalf of all of our students for all that you have done. And we wish you well in your new venture. And we're happy that you're still going to be a parent here. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Alrighty, and now on to future board agenda items. The next regular board meeting will be on October 24th. be on October 24th. A budget stabilization plan update is to be determined. And on that note, we have nothing.
Can I have one?
Oh, I thought we were, oh, yeah.
It doesn't need to, for future agenda item?
Okay.
It doesn't need to go on via board agenda, but if we could have an update again on that PTO, on like the board policies for fall festivals and other things with campaigning. I think Marie, in the past, our lawyer had just written a little blurb or something so we can make sure that we're all on the same page and our PTOs can too, and our principals.
Thank you. I know Yorkos is working on that, so they will be, he will be sending something out to them next week. Okay. And then I know you wanted, and then I know you wanted the water sports exempt from hot day policy, but that's going to be out of policy. Okay. All right. And on that note then, nothing more? We're adjourned. Have a good night, y'all.